Good evening and welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the March 21st, 2023 meeting of the Milton Select Board. This is a delay this evening for technical problems. We apologize for that. Everything is in order at the present time. And at this moment, I'd like to ask everybody here as you're calling me to go to the price of the pledge allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America into the republic for which it stands, one nation on your island, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right, agenda this evening will include with the end section, section two items and probably feature from the section. This time generally a public comment. The public comment is open for 15 minutes to the citizens of the town. Each citizen having approximately three minutes to speak. And Mr. Wilson, welcome. It's great to have you with us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate it. We'll take anything there, three minutes. I don't often get the opportunity to come up to the select board meetings. I do tonight for another item, but I want to take the time to thank you all for your public service, what you do. You know, it's funny, when you're not close to it, people just don't realize the effort that you put through on their behalf. I'm a happy resident, comfortable with your services, and I especially wanted to thank your chairman, Arthur Doyle, as he is finishing up his term and going back to relax. And East Milton is...
You never relax in East Milton.
Oh.
Good answer, Arthur. That was a very good answer.
But again, thank you really sincerely. Great work. Keep it up, and I appreciate it. Good luck, Arthur.
I'd also like to acknowledge a communication that was sent by Pete Jackson and members of the Select Board today. Everybody should have received the copy of it. Is there anybody for a public comment at this particular point in time?
None.
Seeing none, we'll move on to item number four. This is discussion approval acceptance of a donation in the amount of $275,000 to the Milton Fire Department for Health and Safety Equipment. And Brian, would you and colleagues, Webb, I'd like to return. Chief, will you join, please? We look forward to hearing all about the work that went into this and the nature of the donation, its purposes, and how we can acknowledge this generous gift to the town of Milton.
I think, although I'm the chair of the Fire Station Building Committee, and we certainly have the chief with us, this is really the work, and it's been a long time, a lot of work on Webb Collins' behalf, and I think it appropriate for him to kind of explain and present it to you.
Thank you, Mr. Collins.
Thank you very much. What I'd like to do is give brief background information of how this has happened and all the players that are, were in the woodwork that we worked with to make this event happen. In simple terms, I've been a great believer for years in gifting to towns and giving back to towns. I've done that several times myself, and I know others have done the same thing too. So when I was asked to join the Fire Station Building Committee, I said, let's see what I can do in this event. Well, I wasn't very successful at my first attempts, but that left in the corner of my mind something that was very important as I willed through the process of being on the Fire Station Committee, of the importance of the health of firefighters, critically important to the town and critically important to, it became very important to me too. So in our committee meetings, when we would talk, I'd say, well, we've got this, we should really think about this. And so I talked to Chief Madden, and all of a sudden I received an invitation to join him on the 26th of January at the fire station. And he came up with a file about that thick with all kinds of documents in it that I looked at. We talked about what they were, what was needed. We added up about to about $240,000 of needs right there alone. We hadn't decided on where the rest of the money might go. And so I said, I want to see for myself. And I went outside, and I went into the station, and I went and I looked. What I saw was woefully obsolete equipment. You can't, you have to do it yourself sometime to see what it was. So what I did was I went back to my office and I took everything with me and wrote up confidential, of course, email describing what I had seen and what I thought the needs were for the town. And I sent this off. This was the following Monday. It was a holiday. I was doing what I do, stupidly working on the holiday, and I get a telephone call. Let's talk about it. So we talked about it, and the person I was talking to said, I'll commit to that. It's on a very confidential basis. And I didn't know what he was, whether he's going to give us $100,000 or what he was going to give us. I asked for $275,000. So what I have here is I have the check. And I'll read it to you because it is for $275,000. It was sent to me personally at the Town of Milton Attention Treasurer's Office. And what it says is that it is for fire station equipment. It is to use exclusively for charitable purposes. And it's a gift of $275,000 from this fidelity charitable donor fund. And that is what I would like to present to the town tonight. I think that this is a wonderful event. I have reached with the donor, wants me to stay involved in it. I'm not going to walk away and because I have to, in effect, see what's being spent, sign off on what's being spent, which I'll... Believe me, Chris and I are on the same page. There's no issue whatsoever, no conflicts whatsoever. And we will follow through and make sure that the proper equipment for the health of our firefighters is put in place.
Thank you, sir. This is Mike Anamis. And Richard is the Select Board Representative to the Fire Station Building Committee. Would you be willing to join your colleagues and maybe Elaine, we could invite you down to take a photograph and a presentation of the check?
I just want to make a comment first. But sorry, Mr. Chair is the chief. And Brian, no, sitting through many of these meetings, Mr. Collins is very placid tonight compared to normally how he is extremely vocal and passionate at these meetings on behalf of this project. Webb comes to meetings, he's willing to fight for any point that he believes is important to this as we know and have heard. And you know, at this point in your life, Webb, you didn't have to take this on, and you did. And you've taken on the responsibility here with great passion and vigor. And I know from watching you personally how much this means to you and how much you wanted to do this. And you are impacting the lives of not just the firefighters who work for the Milton Fire Department, work for Chief Madden today, but the lives of future fighters who will join the ranks in the years to come. And that's a pretty special thing to do. So thank you very much for that.
Yeah, go ahead.
Before Mr. Collins leaves, I'd like to take the liberty of going back to something that he mentioned about giving to the town and to thank him for his generosity and conservation to the town of Milton. Most appreciated.
Thank you.
The chair, I'd like to move item number 14 to the next discussion point as a two is a gift. This is the discussion approval of a contribution of $12,500 to the Milton Coalition for the Mulcahy Family, Mike's 5K to Crush Substance Abuse. Mr. Milano, could I turn to you for this moment?
Sure.
First of all, let me back up. I admitted something. We should have a motion to accept the donation of the $275,000.
I say I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair. I'll make a motion to accept in the amount of $12,5,000 to the Milton Coalition from the Mulcahy Family on behalf of the Mike's 5K Crush, To Crush Substance Abuse.
I'll second.
Okay, can we table this for just a moment? Because what I was really trying to do...
He needs the other one.
Richard, could you go back to item number four? We wanted to move to accept the...
All right, hold on, hold on.
And you'd be an appropriate person to...
Oh, we didn't make the last one yet?
No.
Oh, my God. All right, so backing up, I'll make a motion to accept the donation in the amount of $275,000 to the Milton Fire Department for Health and Safety Equipment for firefighters and personnel.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Moved in seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. You said 14, I just jumped right to 14.
That's been moved in seconded. Any commentary that anybody would like to make on this?
Just to say thank you very much. This is like, we've done this several years in the past, so this is on behalf of a young man who lost his life way too early in life. So this is a wonderful effort by his family on his behalf each year, so thank you for that.
And we'll have appropriate recognitions for all of the gifts to the town, of course. So it's moved in seconded. No discussion? Vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We moved to item five, discussion approval, traffic commission recommendations, amendments to the traffic rules and orders. We have the chair of the committee with us, Chase Berkeley.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members. Thank you for having me tonight. So yes, Chase Berkeley, Director of Public Works and also the Chair of the Town's Traffic Commission. So Traffic Commission met back in February, and we have two items we're requesting a vote for and your approval for. First one being Granite Avenue in East Milton. We're requesting to create in exchange three parking spots, which are currently two-hour parking to 15-minute parking spaces. So just a little background on that one. So if you recall, about three years ago, East Milton was standardized to two-hour parking everywhere, following a lot of research and talking to the businesses and the Chamber Commerce and residents in the area. Shortly after that, the impacts of COVID hit, and then shortly after that, the mass DOT construction project started. So essentially, the square was, you know, vacated and then in a lot of construction turmoil for a long period of time. And so we've had some time since that project has finished to kind of see how things are going and see how the standardization has worked out. And we've heard very vocally from a specific number of businesses that the nature of their business is short in duration. So we're not talking about, you know, restaurants or places where people need to stay an hour or two, but places where people are in and out specifically in this section of Granite Avenue, there are several of them. And we've also heard from the East Milton Neighborhood Association that they strongly support this change. So the idea is to create three parking spots where we'll have frequent turnover because they only allow you to park for 15 minutes, which will help have opportunity for people that just need to pull in and pull out, get dry cleaning, go to a liquor store, or go to, you know, takeout food place that don't need to stay for a long period of time. So there was an unanimous vote. There wasn't any opposition that came to the meeting on this one. So it seemed appropriate by all parties. And then the second one, again, parking in nature, is Central Avenue Business District. So I have to give a lot of credit to Lieutenant Mark Alva and Josh Lee in the Planning Department. They really spearheaded this effort. So again, there was a lot of outreach to all of the businesses and abudders in that area. And the whole idea behind that was to standardize not only the duration of allowed parking, but also in the case of this area, there's a lot of what we call service zone parking. So that's essentially parking for people who work at the businesses in the area. They get a permit from the police department. And it had been a little bit chopped up and things had been moved around over the years. So, you know, there was a lot of, again, outreach from the local community there that it would be appreciated if the town could kind of clean it up. So Josh Lee put together a great website. It's on the town's website if anyone would like to look at it. It shows the layout, and I believe you have a map in your packets tonight that shows the changes and how, what we'll essentially do is standardize two blocks of parking that is consistent with how long you can park there. So in most cases, it's one hour. And then moving the service zone so that it's a little more convenient for people that are visiting the businesses to park and get, and the employees have to park a little bit further away in most cases. But, you know, they're staying there typically for the entire day, so they're not tying up the closest spots to the storefronts. And so again, this wasn't anything that we heard any opposition on. It seemed to be that everybody was in favor. And again, just a lot of credit to Lieutenant Alva and Josh Lee. They were out, you know, boots on the ground in the community, making sure that, you know, anyone that wanted to be heard was heard, and there was public comment through the website available too. So those are the two items we're seeking a vote on. There was a few other ones on the agenda that I'd be happy to explain if you had any questions on, but outside of that, there was just those two items.
Mr. Chair, I'd like a motion to approve the Traffic Commission Recommendations and Amendments to the Traffic Rules and Orders, Article Four, Article Five, Section 12, Granite Avenue, Adam Street, Debassett, request to create three 15-minute parking spots. Item B, Article Five, Section 12, Central Avenue Business District, the Parking Standardization Plan, which is to create same amount, how many?
I don't believe there's an actual number on that, but it references the map.
So the other rule is to approve the Parking Standardization Plan presented by the Planning Department.
First of all, is there a second?
Second.
Time goes to Bryce Ann. Moved in seconded, I'd like to follow up on your mentioning of the East Milton Neighborhood Association's support and acknowledge receipt by the Select Board of their communication and support of this that we received as well. So it's been moved in seconded. Are there any questions for Mr. Berkeley?
Is there a discussion? So, Mr. Berkeley, I just want to say that this might be the quickest thing that's ever happened for me. For those of you that don't know, I called Chase Berkeley right around Christmas time and asked him about, because I ran into that liquor store to buy a bottle of wine after one of my classes had let out, because they're the only liquor store in town that's open until 11 o'clock. And so I happened to get to talking to them and talking to them about the parking spaces. And I called Chase probably the next day. So it was right, right around the middle of December. It's now the middle of March, and this has happened. So I just want to say thank you. I know it was, it had nothing to do with me, but I just want to say thank you. I'm going to put that little feather in my cap and let the owner of that liquor store know. He and I have been communicating very much these last few months about the process of this. So I just want to thank you, Chase, for pushing this along so quickly. It will make a difference for those businesses that are just real quick in and out grabbing a bottle of wine for your evening at home. So thank you.
Any further questions, comments?
Mr. Jeff, if I could just add, it's very rare that we have an uncontested traffic pattern change, so it was welcome to have one. And that's a lot of the reason why it was so quickly moved on that.
Yes, I was expecting some contention, so I'm happy there wasn't any.
Remember this event.
Yeah, we'll enjoy it while I'm at it.
Moved in seconded. No further discussion seen? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Chase.
Thanks, Chase.
And I'll hang around for the next one if there's any public works.
I'd like to do. Also, Chase, would you please extend our appreciation to the members of the Traffic Commission as well?
Sure. Will do.
Appreciate that. Item number six, discussion approval request for use of Manning Park for a temporary installation of a cultural display. Mr. Milano, can we turn to you, please?
Sure. We received a request from Ms. Hamsho on behalf of a group here in Milton about displaying cultural decorations for a time period over the next month or so. She's here, she has a brief presentation that she'll make, so I'll add her as a panelist if that's okay?
Please.
And ask her to go ahead and present.
We all looked around thinking she was in the room.
How soon we forget.
Right?
Hello, everyone.
Welcome, Serene.
Can you see me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, all good.
All right, because I can barely hear you, but I hope that you can, you can see me and you can hear me. So thank you so much for the opportunity. My name is Serene Hamsho. I am a Milton resident. I am a director of technology, working in the renewable energy business. And also, I'm a mother for Leah and Aleen, who are first grader and fifth grader in Collicott School. And I'm also joined by, I guess, a couple of other fellow parents here. I'm not sure if they're able to make it or not. So I'm here on behalf of the Milton Muslim Neighbors Group. And I would like to, if you'll allow me to take a couple of minutes, to share a presentation that we actually prepared, a couple of slides probably they are with Mr. Nicholas. They, I send them to you, so I'm not sure if it's, if we can bring them to the screen and walk through them, or if you had the opportunity to review our request before.
You can share your screen if you would like, or I can go ahead and share it myself.
Sure, definitely, I can do that. All right, so can you see my screen, my presentation?
Yes.
So I'm here tonight to request to install Ramadan and Eid holiday lights in Milton East Square. And just a little background on who we are, the Milton Muslim neighbors are longtime residents of Milton Town and active member in the community. Only in our group, there are over 200 members of parents, children, grandparents, and individuals who have been calling Milton Town a home for more than 40 years. We established this nonprofit organization with the three core values. The first one is to help those who are less fortunate than us, regardless of their religion, also to call for social justice for all, and also to celebrate our shared values. As you may know, the holy month of Ramadan is going to start tomorrow night, and over 2 billion people around the world and 6 million people here in the U.S. and tens of thousands here in Massachusetts are observing the month to start tomorrow, all the way until April 22nd, which is going to end in Eid festivals. And I wanted to share with you this one-minute video created by my daughter, Aleen, who's a first grader. She shared this in her school and last year and also this year, and she explains what Ramadan is for her. So let me know if you can hear.
My name is Aleen.
Do you hear the sounds of it?
Yes, yes.
Right.
Hi, friends. My name is Aleen. Today, I'll be telling you about Ramadan, what we do in Ramadan, and why it's so important to us. Let's start. What is Ramadan? Ramadan is a great celebration. It's also one month. What we do in Ramadan? You fast, which means to not eat, or drink from sunrise to sunset. Kids don't have to fast. Also, in Ramadan, we don't fight, we don't say bad words, we don't talk that brutal. We care about each other. That's so nice. In Ramadan, of course, we do a lot of charity. But what's charity? Charity is when you take anything you love. It's clean, it's new, it's great, it's nice, and give it to people who are neat. We decorate our houses with lanterns, crescent moons, and beautiful stars, just like this. I hope you learned a lot about Ramadan. Bye-bye.
All right, I always love to introduce my daughter because she probably can explain Ramadan better than I do, so I hope you enjoyed watching her.
Hi, friends.
Sorry, I want to go to the next start. All right, so Ramadan and Eid, as my daughter explained, is a big holiday season around the world and always celebrated with lights and with community. I put here some of the pictures around the world and how the Eid and Ramadan is being celebrated with fireworks. This is a picture from Egypt with laser lights and Burj Khalifa, the tallest tower in Dubai. And also this year in London, where they put all the light displays in one of the famous streets in London. Here in the USA, New York has been the leading in the Ramadan displays and decoration in some of the streets, as well as in New Jersey, where they put this massive, not really massive, this crescent moon in one of the streets in New Jersey Town. So Ramadan and Eid holiday is basically our Christmas holiday, and we love to celebrate it with our neighbors and share the delights, especially for our kids who always used to share the delights of others' holiday, and they wanted to get the opportunity to share their own holidays with their neighbors and friends here in Milton. So we came up with an idea of supplying some very nice display star and crescent moon, and those actually are very essential elements in Ramadan and Eid decorations. And I have to point to the fact that those are pure cultural elements. They are not religious, and they should not be. They are not intended to be any religious indication. Star and crescent moon normally are, they are coming from an Egyptian tradition used there for centuries. So the Milton Muslim neighbors decided to supply and donate these items for the town, and we are hoping that we can install them in the new construction area, not the new construction area, the Manning, I think it's called the Manning Park. I still don't know what it's called, the new area that been, that been constructed for a couple of years between the intersection of Adam Street and Granite Streets. So I think it's Manning Park, right? So these are, these are some samples of the decoration that could be installed in East Milton. We've been working with suppliers here in the U.S. and suppliers in Dubai to make sure that we can get some really nice and high-quality elements, but at the same time, we wanted to make sure they comply to the safety code. So we had a couple of items that we wanted to share with you, and also we had some, we put some options on where and how we can install these items. So excuse my humble Photoshop skills, but I tried to demonstrate some options here. One of the options is to have one crescent moon about eight feet, six to eight feet height with a couple of stars that can be installed on a flat basis and anchored tightly to the ground. This is on the grass area to ensure stability, and at the same time, we can use some primers to keep the clearance from pedestrians. That's option one. Option two is to hang strings of crescent moons and starlights around on the, on the light poles across the park if you wanted to avoid the usage of the, of the, of the ground. The third option is to have one crescent moon and two stars to be installed on the concrete areas with primers while keeping the clearance, clearance from pedestrian sidewalks. So we came up with these, these options, and we wanted to present it to you to see which of these... which of these options is most feasible, or if there's, there are other options that we can work on it together. That would also be be something that we would love to 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 discuss. And as I said, that Milton Muslim Neighbors are diverse group of residents. We came from different races, ethnicities, backgrounds, and culture, and we are really proud to enrich the fabric of the Milton community with our mosaic of all of these different aspects. We also, as I mentioned, that would like to donate these holiday elements to the town of Milton, so they can be used on a, on an annual basis for Ramadan and Eid holiday seasons. So our kids can share the delight of these holidays with their friends and neighbors in Milton Town. So these are the slides I have actually prepared to present to you, and I'm happy to get any questions.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your presentation, Serene. And please thank your daughter for us as well. Did you hear us okay?
Actually, you're breaking, so it's some somehow hard for me to to hear. Would you mind speaking to the microphone? Those microphones are working.
On TVS, can you hear now?
Yes, yes, I can hear you.
Wanted to thank you for your presentation and ask you to please thank your daughter for her excellent presentation as well. At this time, I would like to ask members of the Select Board if they have any particular questions, and then turn to Mr. Milano and Mr. Berkeley and check on any details that they may want to suggest or engage in as well. Questions, Serene?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Wallace.
So thank you, Serene. I also want to thank a member of your congregation, Boston Police Captain Habib Hussain, a longtime resident of this town, who sent this to me last week and showed me these pictures and told me what you were about to present. I think probably, Mr. Chair, the easiest thing is for Chase to decide, because these take power, correct? You're gonna plug these in. Am I right?
Those are powered.
These are powered. So I think probably the easiest thing, similar to power, I think a lot of it's gonna decide what's easier for him, because there's only power two. It's in two places on the park. So I think probably what's, I think probably what's easier for Chase.
Discussion, but wanted to see also if any members of the West had any comments or questions to discussion.
Thank you, thank you. I think most of the questions I have actually will be with Chase about securing these things and, you know, all of that type of thing. But how long would this be for? Thank you for the presentation, by the way. It was very good, and I appreciated seeing your daughter. She's adorable. So thank you for that. So how, what dates, can you just tell us what dates you were looking at to have that up? And I guess this leads to how would these things be stored? So I think some of this, some of the questioning will go to Chase as well. But my my question is, how how long would this be up for? And are they all illuminated, all of these displays? Thank you.
So we were hoping to install those during the month of Ramadan, which is gonna be starting tomorrow all the way until Eid. But any day during the month until the Eid holiday, which is the big festival of Breaking Fast, would 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 be definitely fine. And I'm not sure if I I I heard the other question correctly.
So the question was, are these all illuminated? Are these all lit up, all of these displays that you have? Do they all have lights?
Yes. So those are made out of steel and all have light strings. Some of them, it depends on the style that as as I as I was talking with the suppliers, we reached out to the supplier who installed this in New Jersey and had this all made from 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 steel with the lights inside and then a fiberglass is on the top of it to protect the lights from inside. So we have a couple of options. It's all comes to how we would like to install them and how we would like to depends on what options we wanna go with, and we can discuss the the ways of installations or the style that we would like to install it. But all of them are laminated, right?
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Berkeley, could you join us, please?
Yeah.
Yeah. Can you hear us, Tom? Can you hear us when we speak? You can?
You've heard some of the commentary, and would you be able to give us an idea of what the capabilities are for such a display as has been requested?
Sure, yeah. So the new park was constructed with the intent of being able to power lighting around it. So.
Chase, could we hold for just a second? I wanna make sure that. Can you hear okay, Serene?
Unfortunately, no. The 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 voice is is breaking up, so. And it looks like the microphones are not turned on, because I'm hearing from a distance, so.
You have to speak to the owl. Pretend you're talking to the owl.
Yeah.
Okay, so the new park as constructed is what was intended to be able to power lighting around it. So every new street light that's in the perimeter of the park has an outlet at the top of it. So we have the ability to plug things in that are, you know, up at the base of the the top of the light, you know, 12, 14 feet off the ground. In addition to that, there's power available in the north and south plant beds. Again, with with, you know, the understanding that the town was going to install lights during the holiday season. Everything that we've put on the concrete portion where the old Adam Street, um, street was, is what we call self-ballasting. So essentially, it's heavy enough to hold itself down and doesn't need to be anchored into the concrete. Anchoring into grass doesn't sound like a big, uh, big problem, you know. So and I think the short answer is, is everything I saw tonight, I think we would definitely be able to work with and and figure it out. You know, just, you know, a couple things to mention, the the park and project is still technically under Mastat jurisdiction. The project's not closed out yet. But that town has certainly hosted events there and opened the park for public use. But there may be times when Mastat and their contractor need to come in and finish some work that, you know, that could be impacted by that. In addition to that, we did see some vandalism to the displays that were put out over the holiday season in December, January. So just something to be aware of that, you know, on several occasions, things were unplugged by people at night, and there is potential for damage to anything you put out there, because it's it's open and essentially unprotected.
Thank you, Mr. Berkeley. Any questions that anybody might have for Mr. Berkeley? Roxanne?
Thank you. So one question I had was about storage of these items. Where would we store them?
Yes, so without having the exact sizes, it's tough to say that there is some indoor storage available at different places in town, but until we really see them, it'd be hard to commit to space. You know, but you know, we have, you know, Conex boxes down at the DPWI that they could be put away in if if that's the the will of everybody.
I actually have the same question about the storage, because that was one of the questions that we asked for the suppliers, because initially, when we thought of supplying them from Dubai, we wanted to deassemble them, because shipping eight-feet crescent moon is gonna be big, and it's gonna be expensive and costly. So that's one of the questions we were asking ourselves. If we supplied as one piece, is there a place to store them in the town, or should we work with the suppliers that gave us a the unmounted option, so we can deassemble them by the end of the season and store them if this is an an option for us? So unfortunately, I missed the answer, but looks like it's feasible to store them as a nine-feet piece, one piece?
Yeah. We could probably do it. It would be much easier if it can be disassembled and packaged up into a smaller assembly, but again, without actually seeing it, it's kind of difficult to answer. Or if you have any type of schematics or drawings that they provided you, if you could send us those, that would be helpful.
Okay. And the other question, if you don't mind asking, the supplier we're working with in New Jersey is wondering if we want him to install the items, or should we just hand these items to the utility team, and the utility team would be responsible on of installing?
So I just want to clarify by who you mean the utility team is. Is that town staff?
Yeah, I think so. I think so.
So our preference would be that someone else does it, but yeah. If possible, especially if they're familiar with how they are supposed to be put together.
Mr. Wallace.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Thank you, Serene. My question is about insurance. Do you know if you'll have insurance on these items, or if the town will our insurance will cover it if it's on on town property? I'm just thinking, in the event that there's damage, you know, we might want to have insurance to cover any potential damage to the items.
Yes, and that's why we tend to work with suppliers in the United States, because they have insurance rather than just supplying the items from overseas, even though it, we could have plenty of options if you wanna just supply from Dubai or in other places. But this question, we wanted to actually ask to the supplier and the manufacturer if they can give us insurance. I don't have answer to that by now, but I can, I can confirm with the supplier.
Thank you.
Yes, just to to clarify, so Serene, it it sounds like you want to donate these to be the town's property going forward. So they'd be, they'd become ours, and they would be carried under our insurance if if that is your intention, that they become property of the town moving forward to be installed on an annual basis. Is that the intention that was, how it was presented in the presentation? I just wanted to clarify that piece of it.
Yes, that's actually right, that we would like to donate them. So in this case, they would be under the insurance of the town, right? Okay.
Wanted to ask Mr. Berkeley if you would need any specifications from Serene beforehand?
Yeah, it would be very helpful to get as much information about them as possible. Specification, technical specifications, because there's a limited, you know, electrical power available, so we just want to make sure we know what the intent is, so we can tell you if the system can handle it.
Number, size?
Yeah, quantities and size would be very helpful as well.
Sure, I can provide this information, and maybe we can, we can work together and these options and see how where the locations and how those would be installed, because I'm not sure if I understand, fully understood what you mentioned about the installing these items on the ground. So maybe we can follow up and have like more clarification on that, if possible.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I I'm wondering if it might make sense for the Milton Muslim neighbor neighbors to retain ownership for the first for this month, for the first presentation, until we clarify where they would be held, whether they'd be covered by insurance. And, you know, if we don't have a a place to 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 store them, then then you could you could store them if you if you needed to. So I wonder if it makes sense for you to retain the ownership, and perhaps we could take the donation afterwards, after all of these things have worked out with storage and such.
They would still be up, right?
Right. No, no, I I I think what I'm suggesting, they would, they would be up for the next month. They would continue to own them. But once we, once we work out how we would store them, I wouldn't want the town to take them if we had no place to store them. That's the only concern I have.
Mr. Chair, so so Michael brings up a good point. So I think someone's gotta decide which display we want, number one.
Well, that's, yeah.
So Mike, I just fallen up, and I'm aware of the issues at Christmas where people on park, would it be easier if we took this, went with the strung-up elevator option? He's still plugged in at the bottom? Or is there the ability to plug them up the top of the pole where no one could get access and unplug them?
Yep, yeah, you can plug them at the top. Yeah, that would probably be, have the least potential to be damaged.
It's probably not a bad idea, because they were unplugging the tree like on a nightly basis at one point. So when you said, when, as soon as I saw the strong option, my, that was my first thought, was like, can you plug this in at the top so no one can gain access to it?
Storage may be easier, too.
And storage may be easier as well. If it's all right with you, Serene, I'd make a motion that we go, what option is that, two? Option, I I'd make a motion that we go with option two. Could you, would that be all right with you? The 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 strong lights up on top?
Or would they?
Option two, yes.
Would they rather?
Option, option, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you fine.
Yeah, option, option two is the strings of crescent moon and starlight. Those are probably the easiest to to transport and the easiest to to storage, yes.
I I'd make that motion, Mr. Chair, if that's acceptable.
Do you want to incorporate that specification in the?
Yeah, so I'll make a motion to go with what was described as as option two, the strong lights to go from the elevated poles across Manning Park. Is that all right?
As an addendum to the motion as presented?
Yes.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Musto. Further discussion?
I just wanted to make sure that if if we wanted to come back to this next year, because I I think that from the other two options that I saw, the the crescent moons and the stars were very beautiful, and it would be a really nice sight to see in either the grass or on the cement. So while we figure out the logistics of this and how this is gonna work, I I would really hope that we could come back. Maybe not the actual day before the month starts, but at a sooner time, so that so that we could actually try and put something a little larger on our on our park. I would, I would like to see that, because I really I really love the the moon and stars. Oh, sweetie, you did a great job.
She doesn't hear you, but she said that you did a great job. They just watch your videos explaining what Ramadan means to you.
Yes?
Yes.
So I I just want to make sure that that's in there, and I don't know if that needs to be part of the motion. I think that would be silly if it was part of the motion, but I I want the Select Board to make a commitment that we'll come back to this at a sooner date than the day before.
I'm fine. I don't think the motion prohibits that at all, but I think the question is whether they could afford to. Because they're buying these, so.
In addition, we'll have the experience.
For a year, right. We can see what happens for a year.
Exactly.
That that was my thought. I just don't want to lose this string.
So you put this on aside by calendar for?
Yes, and they can come back to us and let us know if this is.
About 10 months from now.
Yeah. So then, you know, they can let us know. We can see how it works for this season. But I I would like to come back to this next year.
So if I heard it correctly, are you suggesting that for this season, we can use the strings, because it's just have less hustle with the logistics, and maybe we can work on either option one or three after the town figure out the the storage and the logistics related to these items and how to store them? And is that what, is that what I heard?
Yes, and part part of it is that option two is least likely to get someone unplugging it, or kids, kids like to congregate there on weekend nights, and during Christmas, they were unplugging things on a regular basis, because they were plugged in at the ground level down where the, that's, if you heard what I said, the reason I picked this, these can be plugged up at the top with the light poles, and no one can get any access to unplug them. So I think for year one, this is probably a good, and if, and if I'm to Ms. Bradley's comments, if you have the money and the capability to come back to add to that next year, I personally would be, for one, would be fine with that. But I know that expenses are new. So.
Any further comment? Ms. Musto?
After our vote, I just have a question. If Nick can tell what the policy is on using the park for this, because we'll get other people that will, you know, ask about it.
Well, we do have, we're going right to that.
But I mean, for people that are watching, you know.
A precedent, as Mr. Wallace will remember, two years ago, we had significant display there of picnic ta, picnic tables, chessboards. Called by a resident, there was, and that was for, you remember, Chase, that was for a long time. I don't I don't know if we actually had a policy that, I think we took a vote and allowed it. But perhaps, I'll be happy to hear what Nick says.
Next discussion. At this time, so you know further discussion on the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you very kindly.
Thank you.
She's still with us?
Yeah, she's on mute.
There she is.
Serene, Chase and I will follow up with you and to to go from there on logistics of the string lights and talk about for potentially something else for next year. So we'll follow up with you tomorrow.
Awesome. All right. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
You're very welcome. So now we'll go to exactly what Roxanne and Richard were discussing, and this is a policy for the use of Manning Park and more. We have in our packets the information on the gazebo. Nick, can we turn to you for a couple of introductory comments, and then have a roundtable on where we think we need to be going?
Sure, I in, I had touched basically Town Council as well about installations of this sort that might be longer than a single day, because most of our policies about use of facilities are for a single day or a single event. This would obviously be a little bit different, and it's either more different in this case where the materials are now going to be owned by the town and installed by us. by the town and installed by us. So it was more about thinking about a potential policy for future groups that may be interested in doing something similar to this, whether it's at Manning Park in East Milton or elsewhere around town, and perhaps something the Policy Committee can take up and think about and revisit the gazebo policy. Perhaps that just needs to be adapted broader, or perhaps we need something else. So that was just my thinking on it, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Musto?
I was just going to ask if you could sort of give an overview of what the current policy is for people that may be watching.
Sure, there's an application procedure for use of the gazebo, and it's pretty straightforward. It's that we can... we generally allow it with restrictions on time and place, depending on some of the stuff that we have in there, but it's not really governed and controlled or restricted to much else beyond that. So we welcome use of it when people are interested in doing so.
Thank you.
Well, the gazebo is left in a will, so the gazebo comes from a bequeath that came to the town from Mr. Baron Hugo's family. And I think it actually describes like what the intent was in that one. I think in this one here, and as you know, Arthur, I mean, all of the discussion and work that went into creating Manning Park, the whole goal there was to create a middle of the park that was usable. We want to make it amenable and used by things like the Milton Arts Center and other chamber, any church groups, like anyone who wants to. So I just hope that this is as broad and cumbersome as it can be. I don't want to be sitting here 10 years from now, after 10 years from the last Manning Park, when people said, "I don't know, I never went there." And all the work for the design, everything to this was to make it accessible to the public.
That's a good comment, and we have a base document which gives us a benchmark from which to flesh out with the assistance of Town Council and others who have ideas to contribute, which we could bring to the Policy Committee and return to the Select Board for consideration with. Is it amenable to anything? Okay, so we will move in that direction. Thank you. Our next item is discussion approval of the annual town meeting.
I like Chase.
Thanks, Chase.
Thanks for being with us, Chase. I'd like to at this time invite Mr. Freitag, if he would join us for this discussion. And Mr. Wannen, could you have some introductory comments?
Sure. So as the board will remember, we went over the warrant articles for the eminent domain article last week. After that meeting, Town Council forwarded some additional suggestions for that article, which we included in your packet, and I'll let Kevin take it from there.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the Select Board. Kevin Freitag from the Office of Town Council. The packet that you have should include a revised version of an article regarding the... we've referred to as the eminent domain article or the eminent domain taking article. And specifically, what's been added is reference to parcels that would be used as compensation in exchange for land that was being taken out of the control of conservation if the eminent domain article were to pass. So rather than identify the potential parcels later in a recommendation, they're being identified in the article itself in the same way that the article that seeks special legislation to take the land... take some land at Kyle Road out of the protections of Article 97 suggests specific parcels that would be used to mitigate the removal of the land from Article 97 protection. That's the difference.
Thank you, Mr. Freitag. Are there any questions for Mr. Freitag at this point before we open the warrant? Not seeing any. Yes.
So do we need to vote on the one or both of these, or...
You get to open the warrant for us, don't you?
No, I know. Is that the goal here?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
And probably only on this one.
That's correct. It's just the eminent domain article. That's the only article that has any changes.
So maybe we have a motion to open the warrant.
Now make the motion open the warrant.
Thank you, Mr. Wells.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Musto. All in favor?
Aye.
We have a motion before us. I'll take the liberty of reading the motion. As a courtesy to the board. Move to amend the annual town meeting warrant article authorizing the Select Board to acquire land owned by the town of Milton locating off Kyle Road and Blue Hills Parkway, assesses map D block 6A and 6B, lot 65, to include six acres of land located on Randolph Avenue, approximately three acres of land located on Eric Drive, approximately one acre of land located on School Street, approximately five acres of land located at the corner of Highland Street and Canton Avenue, approximately 41 acres of land located around Pope's Pond, and possibly other lands to be determined prior to town meeting, which are all held by the town for general municipal purposes, as shown on plans, copy of which are on file at the Office of the Director of Planning and Community Development. Is there a second to the motion?
That was a motion?
I'll second that.
You just made that a motion?
Question. Mr. Chair, thank you. Are we sure that each one of these lands... each one of these identified properties are held for general municipal purposes? Appears to me that one of them may not be Pope's Pond. I'm not sure if that... if the deed provides general municipal purposes. So I just want to...
I think that that's fair to say. I don't think that they're all necessarily held for general municipal purposes. Some are held for open space. I think that that's language that appears in the Pope's Pond, so-called, or the parcel at Highland and Center? Is it Highland and Center? Excuse me. Canton and Center. The idea here was to go beyond that, that these properties would be actually deeded to Conservation Commission. None of them are currently owned, in a sense, by the Conservation Commission. There certainly are... there's text in some of the deeds, there's text in some of the town meeting votes regarding how the town acquired them that suggests how they're to be used, but none of them are deeded to and under the specific control thereby of the Conservation Commission.
So if I may, would it be more accurate to delete... I mean, delete the phrase "for general municipal purposes" and just say "which are all held by the town"?
Yes.
So I'd make that friendly amendment to...
Off this motion? That is acceptable, Ms. Musto. Is it a friendly amendment?
I seconded it.
Oh.
I seconded it. I thought you put it forward, Mr. Chair, so I seconded it.
He did.
Okay, thank you.
He did.
You are amending the motion?
I'm offering a friendly amendment to clarify that, to take out the phrase "for general municipal purposes."
That's been seconded. Will we vote on the amendment at this time? And then go back to discussion, okay?
If I may, Mr. Chair, if it's a friendly amendment.
We don't have to vote on it. It's accepted. It's accepted, yeah.
Is it agreeable to everybody?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
So I had some thoughts that I wrote down. I was wondering if this would be the appropriate time with regards to this?
Please.
Okay. So I have a couple of comments about this particular article, and I would say this article is a bad precedent and a slippery slope. People who would leave land behind for conservation would expect that it would remain that way. Otherwise, they'd have no need to put it into conservation. Excuse me. The Lamb Relatives have made it clear that the land was sold to the town with the understanding that the town would honor the wishes of the Lamb Sisters and that the land would be protected open space conservation land. They trusted this would be honored. I think this is a bad precedent. We will have started on a path where we can use this as a stepping stone for perhaps other purposes down the line. What could be taken next? Where is the endgame? Today, this land, and what will happen tomorrow? Let's remember that eminent domain is being used to take conservation land. It's not just any land, and as a member of this board has stated before, it's conservation land. It's also troubling that some people vilify those who question these proposals as not supporting the schools, or they say because your kids are older and out of the schools that suddenly you have less interest or at stake with the schools or, you know, the educate... or don't value the educational experience of our children. I support the schools and always have, and could certainly match that record against anyone else sitting here, probably the exception of Richard. I feel that this is more about the process. It's about what's right and what's wrong. The children should not be used as shields to support the taking of conservation land by eminent domain. Adding Pope's Pond into this article is wrong. The residents of Milton, I think, are smarter than to fall for this. Pope's Pond is being used as a bargaining chip to take out other land out of conservation. If Pope's Pond needs clarification regarding whether or not it is conservation land officially, then we should do a separate warrant article for that. I don't think it should be put into this article to fluff it up and make it seem as though we're getting this land to bolster the argument for taking land by eminent domain. And at the end, what type of town do we want to be? I don't feel that the end for this justifies the means, and that is why I will be voting no. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Musto.
Mr. Chair, so I don't have any prepared remarks, and I guess Nick knows I talked to you yesterday. I've talked to Sean. I sat here yesterday at a meeting with a run pack of seniors who most of us here, many of them know. I've talked to some of my dearest friends in the schools who, when I get the presentation, I get the issue. These are the times where I often say to myself, "I wonder what John Cornard would say to me, or Marvin would say if they were here today," people who have been... gave so much for so long. And yesterday, I looked in the faces of people who've given their whole lives here, raised their kids, raised their grandkids. Every one of them just has the worst taste in their mouth. Today, I called one woman who I really, really respect, who's contributed to this town for so long, and in a very quick way said to me, "Eminent domain is a bad idea." Another long-term resident said to me, "If eminent domain is your best card, then you're done before you start." We've been going to town meeting for a long time, Arthur, like many years, and this is really a tough, tough thing. I was not here when Kevin presented this. It was when I was away. I didn't know if this was the route we were going to take. And I watched how Michael sat before the warrant committee in the night and how difficult it was in that room. And I do think that in light of how much we need this, I don't think this is going to pass. I did tell people I would vote for the article because I think town meeting is the place where this needs to be discussed. But this is in... in 1955, the town took Turner's Pond by eminent domain to protect it. I'm just giving one example, because they were going to take that beautiful piece of green and build houses on it. And that's the type of thing where they used eminent domain, successfully took that. And Turner's Pond remains one of our passive jewels of recreation today. This is really hard, because I don't think it's a tactic that we use. It's just not... it just... in my heart, it just doesn't seem to sit right, that this is how we should do this. I said last week, and I continued, I had a discussion with a sister today. I still think that Font Pond could be a possibility if we can just convince them to come to the table. And I've been trying, as you know, Arthur, to put some ideas together that are amenable to them, because I think it could be done. And I think that in a way, we knew this, because once Font Pond came on board, we jumped on that boat pretty quick. And like, I couldn't say it fast enough. And this is hard, because to Ms. Bradley's very passionate discussion about being in schools today, I get that. But I just think that we're really in a position that this is not the way we do business in town. And in this case, as much as I support the schools, I support the need for new school, I just don't think eminent domain is the way for us to do this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Other comments? I have a question, if I may, and that is with respect to the approximately 41 acres of land located around Pope's Pond. Is that inclusive of Pond?
I think it probably is.
Yeah, I would think so, too. It would have to be.
It should be with that magnitude of acreage. So I would like to offer a friendly amendment as well, so that it would read of land located around and inclusive of Pope's Pond. Would that be acceptable?
It's fine.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
Yeah, that's fine, Mr. Chair.
Is that agreeable to everybody?
Yes. Can I ask a question, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
And so Kevin, do we have to vote this tonight? Could we wait until town meeting to see how things are going, as we have in the past in other articles, and make a decision then?
How much time do we have with respect to the School Building Committee and the Warrant Committee, Mr. Zulus?
If I may, I think we're just voting to include it in the warrant. I don't think we're taking a position about whether we support it or not. I think we're just voting to include it in the warrant.
That's all we did, is to open the warrant for inclusion.
Yeah. So we're doing...
With the two amendments now noted.
With no recommendation?
No recommendation at this time. And that gets to your point, then it goes to town meeting for what you mentioned.
To be debated.
Correct.
But they would be debating the proper words of it instead of words that would have to be amended with a green sheet. I think that's the difference.
Okay. Because if we don't vote this, then it's going to go without being amended. The amendment, we're just going to close the warrant. It's going to go as is, unless it passes.
So it is moved, amended, seconded?
Yeah, by second.
Any further discussion?
No.
And this is just for the warrant. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And at this time, we do not need to look to any other items for the warrant. So is there a motion to close the warrant?
So move. I'll make a motion to close the warrant.
I may. Do we need to do the index page?
I believe that can be outside. So Mr. Wells?
So I would... yeah, I would draw that motion until... do we need to... you want to make a motion to close the index page? You want to do that, Michael? Want to make a motion to close the index page? Is that what you're asking, Michael?
Yes, I didn't know if that needed to be done before we close.
All right, so I'll make... I'll make a motion to close number two and number three, the index page, and...
Second? Ms. Musto? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, Kevin. I'll make a motion to close the warrant. Second, second, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed. Warrant is closed. We now have item eight, discussion update policies and decorum at public meetings in Milton. I'd like to defer this at this time, particularly in recognition of the recent decision by the Supreme Judicial Court. Give us some time to consult among ourselves and with legal counsel to ascertain what it is that we should bring to the Policy Committee, and then from the Policy Committee back to the Select Board. Is that agreeable to us?
Sure.
Sure.
I didn't think there'd be any dissent, so thank you all for that. Appreciate it. Now, there's a discussion, an update on the budget, and then we have the opioid settlement. So Mr. Milano, could I turn to you for a moment?
Sure. The warrant committee met last night to start really diving into the budget. Just in terms of just a brief update as to what those conversations entailed, they're really focused on the extra million dollars for supplemental needs that was being funded with free cash. There are some concerns raised about doing that. They are meeting again tonight. Amy Dexter, the towns financial director is there to assist them in their review of the budget. I'll keep you updated as that progresses. They've been taking some votes on warrant articles to get through but haven't completed their review of the budget. As soon as there is an update, I'll let you know and keep you attuned as to the progress they make.
Any questions, Ms. Milano? At this point, may we turn to the opioid settlement and the Board of Health?
Sure. So I mentioned this briefly last week, but the, there is money for the, through the opioid settlements that the town has party to. Coming to the town, we've already begun receiving monies. $155,000 has been received through fiscal year 23 so far. That money will close to free cash at the end of this year and be available for appropriation at that point for purposes eligible under the opioid settlements, expenses including prevention, treatment, awareness, purchase of supplies and equipment. There's a broad list of eligible expenses. There's additional money coming in, beginning in fiscal, again, in fiscal 24 and then for the foreseeable future, the town will be receiving these funds. In fiscal 24, we anticipate a minimum of about $75,000, $76,000. So I had asked the health department if they felt that that was an appropriate expense for their department to take on. They discussed it with the Board of Health and the Board of Health is requesting that those monies be appropriated in an account under their budget to be administered through the Board of Health in the future, in this coming year fiscal 24. And then each appropriation will be dealt with as we go through each year. So I think if this board's amenable, we'll, we'll update our budget. So we'll update our receipts because of the monies that we anticipate coming in and will increase the health department budget by that same amount to give them these monies moving forward to put to use. I don't know, Ms. Musto, you want to describe some of the thoughts the Board of Health has had initially?
Thank you. So we had a board meeting recently. We talked about it. There was thought of looking at all the different uses for that, those funds, and also to try to talk with the police and the fire department to get a sense of what they're seeing in town, you know, for Milton residents, what are they seeing? And there was some talk of, you know, different programs that we could do. Would we want to help somebody that's in recovery or, you know, we were shooting around a lot of different ideas. And so we first wanted to try to find that, find out from our police and fire chiefs what's going on so we had a better sense of the community.
So can I ask a follow-up to your question? So given that, so the $155,000 goes directly into the health department's budget?
At this time, no. So just to be clear, all we're talking about right now is the money we anticipate coming in at fiscal 24, which is about the $76,000. So the $155,000 will have to be appropriated at a future town meeting. And at that point, it could go likewise to the health department or elsewhere or, but it'll be, that'll have to be appropriated by the town meeting before it could be used.
So to Roxanne's point, like Park and Rec might want to apply the, on the programs, police might want to apply under their program. I mean, I'm just thinking about all the proactive things the SRO is doing in this town, especially in the summer with teenagers in this town. It's overwhelming what they do.
And to be clear, they could request funding from the Board of Health. It's just a matter of who is responsible for dispersing the monies once it's approved by town meeting.
And there are certain uses. It's very specific within our packet.
Right.
Yeah.
So we have a motion before us?
I'm ready. Oh, do we, you made the motion?
I was going to offer-
Oh, go ahead.
The Board of Health. Make it as you'd like.
So move to approve the opioid settlement funds appropriation for FY 2024?
Is it a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Zulus. Move to the second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
See you later, Ms. Thank you. Number 10, I thought while we were going to try and squeeze that into number nine, just have it as a discrete item to see if there's anything that needs to be added or are there any comments from Mr. Wells?
On number 10?
So same thing, they haven't approved the capital budget yet.
We're waiting, I mean, we're presented-
That's the update.
Nick did talk to the chair a little bit. They, one of the members was suggesting a couple of changes. I've not heard them yet, I've seen them and I, I think what we'll do if that does happen, I think the Capitol Committee will meet first because I think our intention would probably be to maintain the recommendations we made. That's what I think, so we'll see what happens. We have not heard yet, so.
We'll keep it on the agenda.
Yeah, future agenda. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Item number 11, is discussion update MBTA communities and advisory by the Attorney General regarding MBTA community zoning requirements. Mr. Freitag, could you join us in just a moment on this, please? The thought that's in mind is whether it would be wise for the town to have something on the record from legal counsel with respect to the approach to be taken.
In other words, an opinion from my office-
Exactly.
-regarding what the town's approach should be.
Right. I've been watching the discussion in the media with respect to other communities and this has been in the air a little bit, so it might be something wise for the town of Milton to do. Would that be something that you give me back?
Absolutely.
Mr. Milano, any comments on this?
No, I appreciate that. I think one thing that, one comment that's coming back is, is what is legally required and not legally required. So I think having that clarity from town council will be helpful moving forward. And the Attorney General did have an opinion that I included in your packet last week that talked about, you know, that all towns did have to comply, made allusions to what would happen if towns did not comply. So having a little bit more, a written opinion to that effect from town council for our, for our records, I think would be helpful moving forward.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Wells?
So clearly this is a very high-profile topic of discussion. The potential for 2700 rezoning for 2700 new housing units in this community is really impactful. And what is more important is that many people often forget is that one-third of geographic footprint of the town of Milton is the Blue Hills Reservation. It cannot be touched. To Mr. Zulus's MBTA trolley issue that he pays some attention to, I heard, you know, one legal opinion the other day that, you know, had we not had the trolleys in this town, had, had they closed the trolleys and turned into a bus route when, until Representative Colonnay and others fought it, we would not be included in this. But one interesting legal opinion that I was presented with the other day is that we're the only one that has the trolley. All the others have, you know, a high-speed line, you know, an Ashmont, a Quincy, you know, they have a train. We have a trolley. And I asked Mr. Zawinski to give me just what he thought. I think I took Blue Hills Parkway, you may have, I may have, I've said this, I may have said it several means, just tell me what Blue Hills Parkway would look like in this rezoning. And he pretty much described to me that it would be almost exclusively three and four family houses on both sides of the road. I found this pretty amazing that we had a, you know, a DCR commissioner who a few years ago, and we just wanted to get a curb cut to the ice house. And it was like we were touching one of the most historic natural roads in the, we cannot possibly have a curb cut for our ice house and yet this could happen. So I do think, you know, if you look at the school issue that's ongoing right now with what we have today, what, never mind what the pending 40B projects that are on the horizon for, to begin at some point, not too distant future at some level, some of them, what that's going to do. And then add to it then, I mean, how do we do this? You know, how, you're truly talking about changing the framework and the appearance and the makeup of this town, you know? My father would always say to me, we let them build that expressway through the square was the biggest mistake we ever made. And that was built to have 50,000 cars a day. Well, now it's carrying 150,000 cars a day. And then, and that bleeds off to every street and every neighborhood every day of the week. So I get the need for housing. I get, and this, you know, got started on Governor Bacon, now it's being pushed by Governor Healy. I do think we really need to look at, I don't think we can just sit back and say, okay, bring it on. I think this is probably one of the most significant things as far as altering the complexion and the makeup of this community that we've ever faced. And I think we need to really kind of strategize and look at this. So to Kevin's point, I think you need to think about what I'm saying here tonight because this is pretty important. I mean, till you talk to Tim, I mean, Tim is literally trying every, to get 2700 units, I mean, he's looking in every corner, house, backyard, garage, existing facilities, possibly churches that could close one, I mean, everything. That's pretty dramatic. That's pretty dramatic. What if we get another 500 students? How's that, you know, what do we do, you know, like, what do we build? A 10-story high school? I mean, I just, I think we really need to, and probably, I mean, to complete 2700 units, probably not necessarily we'd be alive by the time it's done. It'd probably take that long, but, but I think part of our role is, is, you know, protecting future, future generations to come that just as the settlers who came here, the 22 residents that crossed the Napa River from Dorchester to Milton in 1640 to create this community, I think our obligation is just as important today.
Follow me, Richard Collycott.
Huh?
Follow me, Richard Collycott.
Yes, yes.
From the Collycott School, this name. Any other comments on this topic? Mr. Freitag, do you have what you need at this point?
Yes, thank you.
Thanks for joining us and for doing this.
You're welcome.
At this time, the chair would like to move item number 23 forward on the agenda. This is discussion approval, a letter proposed by Mr. Zulus regarding conditions of the stairs located at the MBTA station located at Adams Street, Milton, Mass. Mr. Zulus, could we turn to you, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The only question is really, do we want to, do we want to follow up our letter to the governor from last month to which we didn't receive response and provide some pictures to what the situation is now? And to, you know, again, request assistance? That's the only, that's the only question.
Thank you, Mr. Zulus. Like to offer that Senator Timolte has been in communication with me on an ongoing basis about his efforts with the executive office. And there is a dialogue that is taking place. So what I'd like to suggest is that we might defer the suggestion until such time as we have more information from the senator and other parties that may be forthcoming and revisit it in the presence of that information if that would be acceptable to you and others. Mr. Wells?
So, Mr. Chair, I had the fortunate opportunity to have 10 minutes alone with the governor on Saturday morning to talk about this. And I was with her both Saturday and Sunday and both her and the Lieutenant Governor and it was on every news station. I mean, it's, from what I've been able to decipher, it's clearly their priority. It's, it's the billion-dollar massive headache that she's inherited. I do, I mean, I've known the governor for a little while, like I, I do believe that she truly cares about the state of the T. I mean, the news has showed, you know, some of the issues, Cambridge, downtown Boston, escalators don't work, ceilings falling on people's heads, slowing down. I do think they're on top of it. There is, I think it's 100, is it 100 million, Nick? Whatever's put aside for this, I, I'm, I kind of like with you on this to kind of like defer and let's give them a chance, let's see what happens. See, I truly believe, listening to her words, both of their words, both times and looking her in the eye and speaking to her, that they're doing the best they can to try and grapple a massive problem that's calling off right now. So that's just, and I was very appreciative that she even heard me on it, so.
Thank you, and thank you for having that conversation on behalf of the town. And we saw in the public media on Sunday about her discussions relative to the priority of hiring a project MBTA. We do have to give in the transition period, people a little bit of an opportunity. So I sense the mood around the table is to defer until we have additional information, then we can always come back to it. Acceptable to all.
I did, I am putting Mr. Milano in touch with the project manager of that, this section of the, so perhaps that press will be, maybe they're going to have continuing dialogue and I'm sure that we'll give him the opportunity to voice the concerns that you've already, Mr. Zulus has already articulated.
Great. Mrs. Zulus, thank you for keeping this front and forward. Those are very startling photographs, aren't they? Item number 12, a discussion update, like Ward Committee Review Process of Voluntary Appointments to Boards and Committees. Roxanne and Aaron, can we turn to you for an update on where we stand at the present time? I don't know who's going to go forward.
I want the first last name, Ms. Musto. So we met today. Town clerk was present and the town moderator was also, he zoomed into the call, to our meeting. And we have two, we're, I think we agree pretty much on the first book. So what we did, what we have is we have, let me just show it, we have two items that we're working on. One is a guide for appointed volunteers, volunteer application and committee list. And so this was sort of going to be that two-page document that we were talking about before. But what it does is it has in it an application form. So if you're going to apply to a committee, whether it's for the moderator committee or our department. And then it has a couple of questions, so it's a regular application and there's a little bit of information in here. And so Ms. Bradley and I have been going through that and we had the town clerk present. There's a few things that Mr. Freitag will have to look at as well, so waiting for some of his input on that. And then we also have a handbook. So this is the bigger handbook that, that Ms. Bradley had started to work on and what did, what we did or what I did is I took a lot of that information and sort of synthesized a lot of it in here. So it was just a little more user-friendly, I would say. And we're still reviewing that, Ms. Bradley and I are still reviewing that. So we had input from town clerk, they still have to add more things to it, but town clerk's extremely busy right now because she has to get census, we have elections, she's working on her, was it the book of reports?
Annual report.
Annual report, thank you. So yes, she's working diligently on that. So there's a lot going on, but some of these sections in these documents relate to her input and Mr. Freitag as well. You know, some of the things we've had to take out, like decorum and things like that because of the new rulings and so forth. And the other piece that we're working on is a listing of, we've reviewed the committees many times as far as which ones at this point are sort of archived, have sort of, you know, done their work and need to be on an archive page. Some where there are single appointments, for instance, like a privacy officer or just, you know, those type of positions. So Ms. Bradley's working on a document that will have that. So it'll be easier to bring to the select board to show you which ones, which committees should be archived, which is current and active and so forth. And I don't know if I'm missing anything.
I don't think so.
So we have another follow-up meeting in a couple of weeks, so we're working on it diligently and we need the input really from the other entities because certain parts really apply to the town clerk and certain parts, we need Mr. Freitag's input.
Good progress. Thank you both. Ms. Bradley, any follow-up or additional information at this time? Okay. We look forward to the next iteration.
Yes.
That's great. No sense in needing to get anything to us until after you've had the-
We need the right input.
Consolidated photographs in the next iteration. Just wanted to be sure that you understood where I was on that. I wasn't anticipating something that wouldn't be realistic. Thirteen, committee appointments, Climate Action Planning Committee. We have a number of people who- We have a number of people who have submitted applications for that committee. Mr. Milano, can I turn to you for some comments on this? I'd just say beforehand that we'll remember from the charge that a number of the members of this committee, like with the youth task force, would be coming from specific bodies, school committee, somebody or other, somebody from the on the youth task force. For example, somebody would be coming from that committee also on Climate Action Committee, somebody from Sustainable Milton. So we have to pass all of that out, which isn't going to be something that we might be able to do tonight. Needless to say, Nick?
Yes, so we followed up with each of those boards that have a designate or a member to serve. We did hear in the intervening time period from Sustainable Milton that Mr. Hasher would be there, recommended, it would be their designate. But otherwise of those bodies, we have not gotten any names. So we did list out the folks who applied for one of the residential categories or for the residential category, there are two Milton residents who will serve on this. Climate Action Planning Committee, you do have a number of names in front of you for those two positions while we continue to work with the other bodies on their appointees going forward.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Wells?
So why don't we, if we, if I may, because this looks like this is going to take some time to just chip away at this, would it be, we can't make a motion. You don't have this on for approval, you don't have this discussion update?
It, that's correct.
So this is an on for approval?
That's correct.
All right, so that.
And that's on both committees or just this one?
That is both.
Okay, so quick question on the youth task force of the ten names, how many are we nominating there? When we do get, when we get, how many, we're making all ten? No, I thought there's a, I thought there's a breakdown, Michael, for categories, all right, I got this.
There are three teenage Milton residents.
Three parents.
There are three parents. Okay, but for the other members who may not have it in front of them, two members with professional.
Thank you.
Experience, a youth programing, a member of the Milton Coalition and a member of the select board.
But we can't, and we can't do that tonight.
We're not prepared to.
So we do that the next meeting?
We could aim for it.
Okay, okay. Can we reappoint the three one tonight or no? We can't do that either.
Well, we're not finished yet.
All right, okay.
We have a couple of hands around the table, I think.
Go ahead.
No, no, that's okay, I'll go ahead.
No, I was, I was just going to say, you know, we have a number of great applicants. All applicants are fantastic in terms of their background. One way to go, we have Dr. Hasher, who's already been designated by Sustainable Milton. And then it seems to me, we have, we, the select board have, one of our members are a designate. The town administrator has a designate, no, he has a designate.
Or just one?
And then we have two residents with expertise. Just reviewing the resumes, it seems to me that Dr. Godlaski and Ms. Dyke Redman might fit into that category of the two residents with expertise. Dr. Godlaski has been studying climate at Harvard University and working on these issues for fifty years, he tells us. And, and Ms. Dyke Redman, who served on the traffic mitigation committee and was diligent and great as background in city planning, which is one of the, one of the requirements for those two residents. So, so I guess we can't vote yet, but it seems to me, we, the select board have really two categories. One is to appoint a member ourselves or a designate. And we could, from any of these, find applicants. And then those two residents with the background in planning or energy infrastructure, which I think Ms. Dyke Redman fits certainly, and then sustainable architecture, all of the, the additional descriptions related to climate and energy efficiency, energy efficiency and climate advocacy. And it seems to me, Dr. Godlaski fits that as well. So just a suggestion that that's what we have to do. And then it'll be up to the other groups. And then it seems to me, all of those applicants who we, who we don't choose or who are, it seems to me, we might want to tell the other committees, you know, let the other committees know. So maybe one of those fine applicants could be the designate of one of those other committees. So they could be on it as well, because.
Either the CONCON or.
Exactly. Planning board, school committee, you know, so they, so, so, so they know the breadth of those applicants. So maybe, maybe those committees could appoint one of those other members.
And the CONCON chair has been asked this as well. And then their next meeting is the April eleven meeting. That will be after our next meeting, which is April four, if I recall correctly. So I don't know how much longer we want. I would like to see if we can at least start these committees. If something going is.
I was ready to do that tonight, but I guess if we can't, if we can't appoint, then I can't do that tonight.
We do typically just list it as it's listed on tonight's agenda and we typically do take votes under that category. So if, if you're electing to vote because it doesn't say discussion approval in front of it, but are prepared to, if you want to seek clarification from town council, that's an option. But this is how we do typically, we do just typically list it as committee appointments and we list the committee and we list all the names.
Well, that is the will of the board.
Okay.
Would it be better to do a little bit of homework on this?
Well, there is, I heard, there is one candidate there that I'd like to at least talk to before I vote, but I think. Ms. Mustard?
I would say that it, it would be good to, I mean, like, all of these people are highly qualified and they all have unique qualifications, right? They all offer something different. For instance, I was looking, there's this Fred Taylor who's on the Shade Tree Advisory Committee and that might be a good connection with this committee. You have Matt Pinucci from Friends of the Blue Hills. So there are different, there are a lot of different entities. And so I think, you know, obviously you have somebody that's been nominated from Sustainable Milton. So that's an easy one, right? Right? But I think it's a, there are so many interesting people here that I really would like to give that a little bit more thought if possible. I mean, I have no problem, you know, obviously Sustainable Milton already has who they would like and I have no problem doing that appointment if you want to. But I don't know if we want to do one appointment without some more, you know. And I also would like to know, when do we think that we would have some of these other designees? Like the school committee, planning board, conservation, you know? Yeah, we need, I think, I would rather see a better package with that. Is that possible, Nick?
Mr. Wells?
I'm looking.
So I want to fall to Michael's point. Because I have enough committees, I have enough freaking work. Is there a member, is there a member that wants to sit? And if not, maybe we pick one of these as our designate. I'm just trying to chip away at this to get it, just to, I'm just asking, like, so.
Ms. Bradley?
Thank you so much. So I have a couple of questions here and I can't blame sentence, but it's mostly around process. I believe at the last meeting I had asked if it was possible for us to have a grid almost of what this looked like, so especially for the youth task force. Who's, how many of those have children and you have it? Where is, where is it?
It's in a packet.
It's in a packet.
I must have a different packet, Nick.
I missed it the first time too.
You did?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a one pager right after the task force charge before the application.
Okay.
You're not alone, Erin.
The packets are really, I need to have discussion with you offline about them because it's becoming really difficult. But I'm going to just, do we appoint first and then the other committees appoint from what's left over? Or do they appoint and then we appoint from what's left over? Or do they even consider?
By the sleigh forward.
Right, but do we even?
The nominations come from the.
Consider, do they even consider the people that have put in their applications through the process?
I think that was Mr. Zulus' point, that the applicants could be fed out to the bodies that are supposed to be making recommendations to us as well as.
Yes, it is.
For them to entertain as well as any other parties that they might want to submit.
Okay.
So what we have done is we've let them know that they each have an appointment to make to this committee. We have provided them the roster and the applications because we did that a while ago before the roster was complete. If the board would like me to, I can certainly forward the list to those groups to say, here's a group of folks who are interested in serving if there aren't, there isn't anybody from your board or somebody else you have in mind.
Well, if I may, it may make sense, so we're not duplicative, for us to make our appointments first before we, because then, you know, they may appoint someone that we appoint. We may make our appointments first and then send the rest of the applications to those other groups. That may be one way to do it.
What date did the packet come in on?
Two days ago.
Friday.
We sent it out on Friday. So, so. No, I didn't see it.
I guess I would just say, I think, you know, Nick, if you can follow up and just say, we need to know before our next meeting on these, these specific categories. You know, we've already closed the process for who we have for applicants and we have great applicants for both, for the climate action and the youth task force. But if we can go back and ask that question and just tell them that we, we need them for the next meeting or whatever.
The one that we really want to take a look at is the students, we want to have three students. We have one student, we have positions for three parents, we have seven parents who have applied.
Yep.
We have one, two, three, four, five, six, right? Thank you. And two professional experience and we have four who've indicated professional experience.
Thank you.
Do you have the grid?
We're on our way.
Do you have that grid? I'm sorry for that one, I didn't have it in the packet.
For which group, I'm sorry.
For the youth.
Yep, it's, it's in the packet. I can distribute it separately after tonight's meeting.
Thank you.
Sure.
So, Mr. Chair.
No, I, no, I am struggling over here with the way we are communicating. I am just going to take a deep breath about it because I, is there a reason why we're sending this to people individually at this point and not us as a board?
It's not just as a board.
So I didn't get it. That's the problem I'm having right now.
Yeah, we distributed it out on Friday at one twenty is the email that went out to this board.
I have no email.
Okay, so then we're having an issue. But it, it was listed, everybody's email is listed separately. Okay, and I do post it at the same time online.
So I just went online, where are you posting it?
Under the select board page.
Oh, under our page?
It's, there's a select board meeting packet link there. And I.
But not on the page of the announcement of the meetings? Yeah, that's where I was looking.
I can see if we can add it there, it's, I can see if that is, it is an alternative location to add it. Or add a link to it somewhere on one of those landing pages.
These packets really.
Can we do one thing? Can we at least appoint, I'm looking at Kevin, can we appoint Mr. Hasher? Can we do that tonight? No, you think we can? All right, so I'm making a motion of point.
Just to make sure, Gavin said thumbs up?
I'm making, I'm making a mo, I'm chipping away at this. I hate doing nothing. One, I'm making a motion of point is the representative from Sustainable Milton, their designate, Alex Hasher.
One second.
Okay, let me ask a related question to this motion, Mr. Wells.
Sure.
Maybe a friendly amendment. Two candidates with, or applicants with exceptional qualifications are identified by Mr. Zulus. Mr. Zulus, do you want to put them forward or do you want to hold them forward?
Well, only if the members are comfortable. I think Roxanne said she wanted to look at them a little bit more, so I don't want to, I don't want to, you know.
I just wanted to put it on the table.
No, no, yeah. What I was saying, what I was saying was I think Dr. Godlaski, who's been studying this for fifty years at Harvard University, I think he is, I think he fits the two residents, in the two residents who have the expertise. And also Ms. Dyke Redman with her background in city planning and energy, I think she fits as, as a resident with the expertise. That, that was my.
And I just didn't want to overlook that.
Yeah.
At this time.
So why don't we, how about if we do this? Because if we vote, both of these tonight, those are our two. We can't, those are the two, that takes care of it, there's no more.
We have another designate.
Yeah, we do.
Ah, it's all the boys.
Yes, we have another designate.
But we could designate anybody we wanted.
So I was going to designate, your first candidate is our, is our designate. I was just going to ask as a friendly amendment, let's make, if no one, if no one's going to sit, let's make Doc, yeah.
Dr. Good, Goodless. The only thing, Richard, if I may, the only thing, I think he has unique qualifications and I really think he fits in the two residents with the unique qualifications.
Okay, all right.
And, and, and so, so I'm happy to do that, but I, but I, I'm not sure if we'll find someone with that kind of expertise. I think of the, of the, of the nominees so far, again, great applicants, but really, my take on it was that the two that really fit that category because of their backgrounds and their expertise were Ms. Dyke Redman and Dr. Godlaski. But that's just my, that was my review.
Now you're still up the SB appointment.
I'm coming, I'm okay, we have one more appointment, so I have one person that I'd like to, but I want to talk to them for us, so.
And the town administrator has an appointment as well.
I know he does, so. I'm okay, you want to second on that?
If people are comfortable, I don't want to, I don't want to.
So what are we doing?
So we're going to make two out of the four we can do.
So we're doing.
We just did Hasher, didn't we? Mr. Hasher, Dr. Hasher, sorry. Oh, we haven't done it?
Yeah, we haven't voted yet.
Are those the two we're doing then?
He's a man in my, I'm in my.
Yeah, I'm suggesting for, for the two residents with expertise, Ms. Dyke Redman and Dr. Godlaski.
So I'm going to take that as a friendly amendment to my motion to include that. You all right with that?
I'm great with that.
Okay, someone has to second it.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ms. Bradley. All right, any further discussion? Seeing that all are fair?
Hi.
All right, good.
So we've got three things now.
Three.
So just to clarify, so that we have the person from Sustainable Milton, we have two Milton residents, but we still have a possibility of potentially two others, is what you're saying.
One from the town administrator and we have one more pick.
If nobody from the town side, right?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
We still have a pick though.
Yes, and if the chamber or another entity doesn't give us a designate, I would think that gives us that package, you?
That should be in the policy handbook, shouldn't it?
We defer to town council. I'm not sure that.
You don't think so, Kevin? If, let's say, an entity opts not to put a person forward, don't you think that would defer, it's our committee, that that would defer to us to fill that?
Mr. Freitag, thank you for joining us.
Good evening again.
Thank you quick, Kevin, you're on the fly here, I want.
Well, I guess my answer is I'd like to see the actual written charge first. Let's take a peek.
We have it? It's simple. So as you get my question, so I'd say one of the designees decides, we don't have anyone to put forward. These are one years, these are one years, right? One year appointments, yeah?
And specifically, you're, you're suggesting or asking if one of the, one of the boards or commissions doesn't appoint a designate?
Doesn't have one, yeah, so we don't have a candidate to give to.
Is there a timeframe in it, like a ninety day or?
But in each of these, couldn't the board select a member of the, of, for instance, the Conservation Commission?
It's, so what if the Conservation Commission chair says, I don't have anyone to put on this committee right now? Which is a real possibility because if you notice, we're a little overwhelmed on this topic.
I'm thinking more like the chamber, I mean, that was.
Yeah, I was thinking more like the chamber. I was thinking more like the chamber says, we don't have anyone to be on that committee right now. It's a non-town related member.
Nick, can we specifically reach out to the chamber?
I've exchanged emails with Joe. Joe and nobody from the board was interested, but he was reaching out to the broader membership.
Okay.
So I think although it does say that the, the appointing authority is the select board, which seems to best some inherent authority with the select board to pick all of the members, it's, it's providing specific categories from which those members are supposed to come from. So I think you probably would just leave the seat open until you had somebody from that, the chamber or their designate, for instance, to fill the position. But I don't think you would just, you would fill it with anyone at random. I think you'd have to wait until someone was available from one of those groups.
And it could be indefinite that it was open?
Which is a distinct possibility, which has happened, that's why I'm asking the question. There were, there were committees where there were designees and they never sit. So you have all these candidates wanting to take part and the restriction is, they're assigned. They're assigned, they're, they're assigned to, some of them are assigned to entities which may not put someone forward.
Kevin, if you look at the first sentence, it says shall be up to, shall have up to, so I think that's just, doesn't have to be filled out.
Oh, that's true.
I think that's probably right.
So it's whoever is, whoever we have at the time, that's the, that's the total membership and out of that, the quorum would be, you know, half plus one. Okay, that makes sense. But there's nothing saying in there that they couldn't get the list of whomever isn't selected by us or somebody else, right?
I think we should.
I do, too. I think that if these people have put their names forward, they should actually, absolutely be checked out by these other appointing entities.
And that would help stimulate the process.
Not like that.
Thank you both for that and all for contributions. Okay, um, so we'll be deferring further appointments on these two to, uh, April four meeting? Okay, and we'll be talking about the meetings, um, in a couple of minutes. At this time, we have.
Are we gonna defer all of the youth task force? Are we doing that?
I think so.
Is that what happened?
Yeah.
Okay. Is it because we, we, is it because we don't have enough information to make any appointments on the youth task force?
Well, I was saying, you know, the fact that you hadn't had a chance to.
I'm looking at them right now, I know half these people. And I'm looking at the resumes that I don't know, so I, I mean, I, I, I flip through them.
I mean, I was ready to make a recommendation on the youth task force tonight.
Right, who are you gonna recommend?
Jamie Lavash.
Oh, all right. But where, where, which one does she fall into? Like, I think that's part of the problem I'm having.
I just read it, she's a both a parent and organization in, in a, um.
I, she is identified.
As a professional.
Professional experience with the programs.
And how many people do we get to pick from that?
We get to pick two, and there are four candidates. Our applicants.
I was gonna, I have to, but I was, I just wanted to chip away at it, so I think.
Yeah, do we wanna chip or do we wanna wait?
I, I put her name out there, so now that I do, just ask me if her name is out there, I'd rather vote if we could.
Well, I'd like to recommend Zady Rose for that position then as well, under the professional experience. She seems to have what we're looking for.
I have somebody for the other, another category.
Roxanne?
Sure, for, um, parent, I would nominate John Vargese.
I can go with that, too. I go with all three of those.
If I may throw a name into the hat, uh, Dr. Posar, I think, would fit within the professional experience, um, exceedingly well.
So there you go.
And, and, and Mr. Angus is our only, our, our only student.
That applied?
Yeah, so we should definitely appoint him.
There's five.
And he's, and he's, he's also, I believe, a, a member of the Milton Youth Advocates.
Yep, they're signed, because Dr. Posar can also go under the parent of a Milton teen. She has a child that is turning eleven, so she, it's kinda preteen, which, God, they are a pain in the wonderfulness.
Is that four, is that four or five? Is that five, Michael? So I'll make a motion, I'll second the five.
Let's clarify, we have, um, one for the student category.
Angus, Mr. Angus.
Exactly.
One for parent.
Two for parent.
Oh, two for parent.
Four, like one.
No, we've got, um, Rachel Posar and John Vargese.
Oh, they're under, they're under.
But Rachel Posar is in, um, professional.
You put her under professional?
No, I put Zady Rose under professional.
I didn't hear, I.
Yeah, that's.
That's right, I'm, I know what I said. And Mike put for Dr. Posar, and I'm saying that she's got a child that is close enough, I mean, preteens are, phew.
So who are the two names for parents?
I didn't do parents.
Well, you, we did.
Yeah, Vargese, Vargese and Dr. Posar, Rachel Posar. And then for professional experience, we've got,
Jamie Lavash.
Jamie Lavash and we've got Zady Rose.
Right, so we have one, two, three, four, five?
Yep.
That we can appoint tonight.
Look at that, we're making progress.
The student?
Yeah, the student's on there, he's, he's the fifth.
Is there a motion to that effect?
Yeah, that's the motion, that's why.
Is it a seconded?
Yes, I'm seconding all of those.
Who made the motion?
I think all of us did.
This is, it made the original.
It made the original, and I'm accepting all those as friendly, and that's the motion, and, uh, Karen's seconding them all.
Okay.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, done. I love how we're done. Okay, to the tree warden.
I make a motion to reappoint for, it's probably thirty, fifty, I know, branch layer. It's the tree warden, passionate tree warden for the town of Milton.
Moving seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The marvelous work in that. At this point, we go to number fifteen, discussion approval, Wallaston Golf Club, change of directors. This is an annual event.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to, I'll move to approve to change the directors at Wallaston Golf Club as presented.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Wells, Mr. Zulus, moving seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. At number sixteen, discussion approval, meeting minutes, February twenty one, twenty three. I found no substantive issues with those minutes. Does anybody wanna?
Mr. Chair, I'll move to.
Comment or move?
I'll second.
Oh, Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the meeting minutes of February twenty first.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I'll stay, Mr. Chair, cause I believe that was when I was away.
Okay. Number seventeen, we will now turn to our town administrator for his report.
Thank you, um, not a lot tonight, just a couple of things I wanted to mention. Last week, um, Chief King, Chief Madden and I held, um, uh, what is, is now a regular monthly meeting with Coastal, our ambulance provider, um, they are, uh, they have since taken over for Transformative, as I've mentioned to this board, they did add a second ambulance, um, not twenty-four hours a day, but pretty close, and we are seeing, um, a vast improvement in service delivery. Um, since Coastal has a purchase Transformative and B added a second ambulance here in Milton, um, our contract with Transformative expires at the end of June, uh, excuse me, with Coastal now expires at the end of June of this year, so we've been engaged in conversations with Coastal about extending that contract and, um, and locking down that commitment of the second ambulance, which right now is not a contracted requirement, um, but they are, something they are providing. Um, so we've been very happy with their, um, service so far, so we're, we're working on that and having regular monthly meetings in the meantime to, to stay up to date on, on what's going on and, and, and here in Milton and how their service, how their calls are going. I also joined the Public Service Committee of the Massachusetts Municipal Managers Association, we had a meeting last week, um, just to deal with issues facing police and fire service, um, from, uh, my professional organization's perspective. Um, and my organizations having a meeting on Thursday are somewhat of a quarterly, not quite monthly, not quite quarterly meeting, um, on Thursday as part of something I'm working on. Um, we had a kickoff meeting today, Josh Lee, um, handled on our climate action planning, so very timely with the work uh, that the select board's done today and getting some appointees on that group. So, um, our contract that this board approved a couple of weeks ago with Apex to begin, um, work on climate action planning is, is underway as of today. And, um, we'll, we'll be sure to rope in the new appointees and the new committee moving forward. Um, and Mr. Chair, that's, that's my summary.
Thank you. Any questions for the town administrator?
Just one for, if you want us to touch on the Tyon Bond report, just to, we did, we did.
Sure, I'll.
Go ahead.
Cede, cede my time to you, Mr. Wells.
No, 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 I can, no, you can, no, I, I, I'm.
No, we, um, so we have, we are in receipt of a report from Tyon Bond regarding the dredging of, um, basically from the Baker area out, from the landing out to the ocean. And, um, it's a big number, but we'll, we're gonna continue to work on seeking grant money in the meantime to potentially do some, um, dredging work closer to Milton and then work with our partners in Boston and Quincy about, um, what we can do about the Baker project.
So the, the significant contaminant on the saltwater side, which we believe is directly related to coming over the dam and into, I mean, this, as you know, there's no commercial on the saltwater side, the commercial is all on the, on the upwind side and Tyon Bond believes that there's clearly a nexus there and we're already started, we already had one meeting, they believe we should petition the EPA to include this project, this cleanup is part of the Superfund project. But in the meantime, Nick's right, we're gonna try and apply to the Seaport Council for a million for this year just to do the basin, the channel going out of Milton Low Mills, so you can gain access and, and, and not just to the boat usage, is that eventually, if we don't dredge there, which was originally mandated in nineteen oh nine, what is the largest smelt hatchery
Right.
on the east coast will no longer, just because we know, they won't get there, it's not gonna happen, so, um, I've already talked to Council Baker in Boston, he was there up, we're gonna set up a joint meeting, I think we're gonna probably wanna come on the agenda here in the not-too-distant future to, to talk about this.
That'd be great work.
And, and I think Josh has already sent it to Jack Cannon, so he could see it, it's significant, it's a twenty-five million dollar cleanup. I'm kidding.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a quick question? Do we have to talk about, we don't have to talk about like admin stuff in an open meeting, do we? Like, I found the email and I, I think I know what the issue is, but I don't wanna waste our time talking about it right now. I can talk to him on the side, right? Okay, thanks.
They're not getting to you, that's a problem.
No, I found it, but then what happens is people keep resending on the same one, so it bumps down, so I never see it.
Well, we do that intentionally.
Gets lost in the strand.
Fix it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Maybe just uploading it to the OneDrive would be
Sure.
the best way for me.
Okay.
It's always fun on cell phones, too, isn't it?
I can't get the email on the cell phone, don't even get me started on that. I gotta call Rob, but I don't wanna bother him, anyway.
The chair will save time tonight, um, pass on a report for this meeting. We have nothing on nineteen with respect to public comment. Uh, twenty future meeting dates, uh, let's keep in mind beyond what's here, uh, the fact that with the work of the warrant committee, we may need to have a special meeting. Don't know when, uh, what time, what date or what time, it will depend upon, uh, much of their work and progress that they make. If that's the case, we'll try and piggyback, uh, some of our other business onto it in such a way that we don't have to have more meetings than, uh, we already have as dates are located on this piece of paper. Any questions about the dates? I just wanted to give a little bit of that background. Uh, Nick, anything to that effect that you wanna mention?
No, I, like I said, I, I'll let you know once the warrant committee finalizes what their recommendation would be on the budget and this, if this board wants to discuss it, um, or take it up, we can, um, work to find a, a day and a time to do so.
Okay, and, uh, yes, Ms. Bradley.
I just wanted to let folks know that if we wanted to change up the schedule at all for the summer, I would be amenable to that. I can make the meeting on the twenty-sixth, which is on a Wednesday right now, tentatively, because I will be done, however, I will not be at the first night of the town meeting, so if you, if, I don't think I need to be there for a quorum, obviously, for our board. Um, but if anybody wants to take my contracts exam instead of me, I'd be more than happy to, um, sit at the town meeting.
We can send Kevin.
Right?
He might flunk, though.
So, but then the, then I'm open, so May, June, July, most August, if you guys wanna change it around. I appreciate your flexibility and my academic studies.
So, I hope you're hearing more about that in the future.
Thank you.
After finals. And you have, um, Nick's note here about the annual town election. And then we need to schedule a subsequent meeting for that. So at this time, um, recognizing that evening is moving fast, but we've made good pace at, what, about nine fifteen? I'll move, uh, that we, uh, enter into executive session. There are two motions, each will take a roll call vote. I move to enter into executive session to discuss litigation strategy against the Massachusetts Bay Transit Authority, MBTA, related to the condition of the stairs at the MBTA station located at Adam Street, Milton, Mass. Based upon my belief that discussion of this matter in open session may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the select board. Again, the select board, um, will adjourn after executive session.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Zulus, moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye. Is it a roll call vote, Mr. Chair?
Oh, it is, indeed, and they said that up front, so thanks, and Mr. Zulus.
Yes.
Mr. Wells.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Ms. Rusto.
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. Someone's gonna keep me my own words, right? Second motion, I move to enter into executive session to consider the purchase exchange lease of value of real property located at one oh one Blue Hills Parkway, Kidder Branch Library, based on my belief that discussion of this matter in open session may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of this select board. And again, the select board will adjourn after executive session. Roll call vote.
Second.
Okay, yeah, it's been moved, it's been seconded by Mr. Zulus, Mr. Zulus.
Yes.
Ms. Wells.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Ms. Rusto and Mr. Doyle, it is unanimous. Okay, we are now in executive session.